We're ready to go.
Okay, so, welcome, everyone. Do I need, do I start? Welcome, everyone. This is the Executive Committee meeting of Calbright College. And I want to start by calling the roll.
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Here.
Amy Costa. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Julina Grande.
Here.
Pam Haines. Bill Rawlings.
Here.
And Alma Salazar. Thank you.
Okay, the Pledge of Allegiance. How about trustee Aguinaldo leading that? You're on mute.
For some reason, I knew you were going to ask me.
Well, I only had three choices.
Let's, let's please stand with our right hand over our heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Regarding the order of the agenda, it's going to be as posted. I do want to tell folks that we're going to have a rather long closed session. It will probably last a good hour and a half, so just keep that in your plans. Next, my board president's report is actually quite close. One thing that I do want to say, I promised to get a haircut before our next board meeting. I'm hoping I can do it outside. I also want to welcome two new members of our board that were appointed since our last board meeting. They are not part of the executive committee, but they will be part of our full board. And that is Joseph Williams, who is a trustee in the San Bernardino College District, and Elia Tara Sofha, who is the, who will be a student trustee, and she is from Sierra College. I've spoken to both of them and welcomed them to the board and encouraged them to get in touch with the Calbright leadership. I hope they have, and also to Hillary. I also want to note that since our last meeting, the Senate has voted to confirm myself and Felicia Escobar Carrillo and Alma Salazar for a six-year term on the board, so we're all approved unanimously and very, very pleased by that and thankful to have the opportunity to serve another six years. And with that, I will turn it over for the CEO's report.
Thank you, Tom. My report will be uncharacteristically short, but the main things I wanted to highlight is, since we last spoke at the full board meeting in July, we have been hard at work preparing for the onboarding of our new faculty cohort. We are very excited for them to start. They're going to be starting together next week, and we are going to provide a lot of onboarding and supportive programming in order to have them have a smooth transition into the organization and for us to have a better understanding of how best to support them in the organization. Next, we have been hard at work in the redesign process of portions of our program pathways that currently exist. Those are particularly focused in the area of redesigning the components of essential skills to better embed them in a more cohesive program of study for the three existing pathways that we have. Similarly, on the student success and intervention side, we have partnered up with the Community College Research Center to help us set up and to evaluate a baseline set of conditions for interventions that are going to be critical for both students who are adult students, but those who are also learning in an online environment. So to give us the benefit of what a research-based approach to program intervention design on the advising and success coaching side will be. Both that activity and the activity of redesign, we think will allow our new faculty to start off on a very strong foot and look forward to integrating them into that work and engaging with them on those next steps. We are also planning and having development conversations on some new program pathways. We'll have more to share on that by next month's full board meeting, and that is about it.
Okay, thank you. We have on the agenda an opportunity for public comment at this moment. Is there any public comment?
President Epstein, no.
Okay, in that case, we will adjourn into a closed session. Everyone, we are going to move, we had no, no report to make out of the closed session. We're going to the consent agenda next. Do we, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
No approval. Pam Haines.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Any public comment on the consent agenda?
There's no public comment.
We'll give it a minute in case somebody wasn't quite ready. Okay, hearing then, please call the roll.
Eldogard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Julina Grande. Julina? She's not there. Pam Haines.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the information agenda. Item 4.2, we, since we're running late, all the, all the members of the board have read the PowerPoint, so we would just like the, the DEAC representative to give a one- to two-minute summary of their presentation, and then the board can ask questions.
Thank you. We met with you last month and discussed methodology for the peer groups, so we don't need to.
No, 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 we're calling the DEAC. I'm sorry, it's the wrong.
The DEAC.
We're doing item 4.1.
Yes.
Sorry.
Who's the presenter here?
I believe it's me. Hi, everybody.
Okay.
This is Leah Matthews. I'm the Executive Director of the Distance Education Accrediting Commission. I'm here in Washington, DC. Thank you for inviting me to your meeting today. I do understand from Tamika that you are pressed for time. I certainly know how that goes. I gave you a presentation, PowerPoint slide deck, that I think hits the high notes on how DEAC is responsive to current trends in higher education, a massive pivot to distance education that was taking place long before we were coping with pandemic. And the DEAC has a lot of experience that I believe is right in the sweet spot for Calbright. As you saw from our presentation, we've worked with institutions that were innovating on how to provide higher education to students. I mentioned University of the People, Western Governors University, and the Eversity from the University of Arkansas system. All of these groups came to us starting from scratch. Now they are serving tens of thousands of students in their own unique ways. And the DEAC board is proud to work with innovators in this space for higher education. We have been around for 96 years. We have been recognized with the Department of Education since there was, before the higher education department was created. We are also recognized by CHIA, so we are on equal footing in terms of our standards and processes and recognition as it relates to other recognized accreditors. Again, I know you're short on time. I don't want to monopolize your agenda, but I do want to be available to your questions. The timelines that Tamika and Ajita have given you towards achieving DEAC accreditation are very realistic, with three non-degree programs in industry-standard areas of healthcare and information technology. That should be fairly straightforward for our peer reviewers to work with your team on accreditation and get them through the process. Tamika, in particular, has been an active participant in DEAC events. And of course, you're working with Sally Johnston, who is one of the luminaries in the higher education and accreditation space. So how can I help you or how can I serve you with answers to your questions?
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to make you wait and then make you rush, but.
It's okay.
So, members of the board, any, any questions? Or Dr. Matthews? I have one, actually. You just said that the, that you're fully prepared to do three courses that we're offering now, or three pathways that we're offering. And if we, if we add a couple more next year, I presume that that's also something that's very manageable?
Completely feasible, but what I recommended to Ajita and Tamika is to come to DEAC with these three program of studies and get the accreditation process finished before adding new content. With DEAC accreditation, we can work with programs up to the doctoral level of studies, so there's plenty of room for Calbright to grow in its long game. But the three certificate programs that are coming forward to DEAC, again, this is industry-standard curriculum. We're very familiar with the content. It will not take us long to work through the application and self-study.
So this is Pam Haines. How long is not long?
Well, 12 to 18 months is kind of lightning speed. That is when we receive an application in good order, when a self-study has all of the documentation and exhibits that are necessary. And we also do an extensive online curriculum review, which means we send specialists into the learning management system to see the curriculum in action, to see what students are experiencing in the teaching and learning and the faculty delivery of content. It takes us about six months to gather sufficient evidence on compliance with three non-degree programs.
So my only, my only response to that, and again, I don't know all of the, all of the legislative deadlines that we are, I'll use the word encumbered with, with no show of prejudice on what that means and what it means for others, but, but I do know that it is, it is within sort of the next 12 months and outside of the 18 months, and so that's the reality of which we are operating in. And so I think it's, I think it is important to bring, bring these programs forward so we, we can work very collaboratively with DEAC, but, but there, and hopefully we'll have, we will be able to begin the process. We may not be complete through the process before we have to have some of these up and running. Yes?
I understand.
Just, just a point of time.
Go ahead, Ajita.
Just a point of time clarification to the actual statutory deadline for us to initiate an application for accreditation is July 1 of next year. And so we were beginning our self-study in the fall. We are prepared to initiate the application process soon before that July 1 deadline. And then the actual process of securing accreditation acknowledges a significant amount of time before we have to actually have secured accreditation. And then we are concurrently planning for Title IV eligibility with respect to the federal financial aid programs and an understanding with Sally Johnston and Shim's help of how this could map to regional accreditation, should the board think that we move in that direction, and should we be eligible to pursue that?
Okay, thank you. Any other board comments? Any public comments? Or Sally, do you want to tell people how they can comment publicly?
Sure, anyone is welcome to comment by selecting the Q&amp;A function in Zoom, and I will note that you have a comment to address the board for three minutes. If you are on the phone, you can use star nine to request and raise your hand.
Okay, seeing no public comment. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Sorry, again, for the hurry up and wait, or whatever it was, wait and hurry up. And we look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you for asking me to join you briefly. I wish all of you the very best on this wonderful initiative that you're fulfilling for the citizens of California. We think it's really terrific, so Godspeed. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, so next up is item 4.2, and Mr. McKnight, you're on now.
Stan, I think you're on mute. Okay, well, I'll address it. Thank you for your time, everybody. I'll be brief and jump right into the, essentially, the meat and potatoes of the study, which is, if you can see on the slide, is the peer recommendations. The steps that included or where we got to this peer recommended group is, step one, we identified benchmark criteria by surveying leadership. We collected institutional characteristic data or information. We, one of the steps is what we, we outlined some qualifying districts from our criteria that we use in our measurements. We assessed the qualifying peer group salaries and determined outliers based off those salaries. We also looked at historical trends and surveys to justify and defend that. Those outliers, meaning the top 10 out of the 72, and one of the districts was Peralta, for instance, at the very bottom of 72. So we determined outliers and removed them from this peer group. And, and these are our recommendations set in front of you.
Thank you, and I, again, I also apologize for the wait and hurry up that we've had to do here. So, board, members of the board, do you have comments, questions about the recommended peer group?
I have one or two, I think.
Go for it.
So I just wanted to clarify, I may have asked this at a previous meeting, that this peer group is primarily looking at faculty salaries. Is that correct?
No. It's, it's, we, we first determined institutional characteristics that are like Calbright, for example. There's that part of the methodology. Then the very last step, we did look at salary schedules and determined outliers and remove those outliers from the peer recommendations, if that helps clarify the question.
I think the, I think the question was, this peer group identification is in service of setting the salary schedules for faculty salaries.
That's correct.
Stage of the process of the faculty salary comparability across these peer institutions, as well as pay practice.
Correct. It's, it's a peer group for benchmarking salary schedules to those peers.
We, we would anticipate using the same peer group for administrators and classified staff, but our first priority is faculty in terms of establishing a salary schedule for you.
Nice question, Bill. Is there a, can you, is there, is there a recommended differential on the process that you're suggesting or that?
A little bit, yeah. So as I was going through the methodology, I noticed that, and CFT is there, and they have a salary compensation study that they do. There are other organizations that also do compensation studies that I wasn't sure were included in this analysis to determine what appropriate peer groups would look like. And so I thought, and particularly also, between faculty and classified, you can have a difference in the salary rates as they compare to one another, even though they're comparable institutions. So you want to look primarily at comparable institutions first, but then take a look at, you know, where are there similarities in faculty? Say, number of faculty, number of full-time, part-time. And then you can take a look similarly at classified, what percentage of the district budget is paid for classified? How many positions, full-time, part-time? And you're going to see some differences there that will have an impact on what a, the kind of fringe levels of the peer group might look like. Your course should still be those that are most common, most similar to the institution as a whole, but within that, you're going to have some variances. And I'm not, I'm not completely sure that some of these others would match well for classified, even though they might match well for faculty. So I just want to make sure we're, we're being open-minded about that and know what's going into it.
That criteria or attribute has been measured in terms of, I understand we can break it out to classified. We, I don't think we've broken it out to classified. However, we have looked at part-time, full-time employees, number of faculty, all of those measurements and institutional characteristics as a consideration.
So these were also including the number and kind of rate of the classified, not just the faculty, right? Because on the slide deck, it looked like it was primarily faculty that were compared and not classified. So I just want to make sure that we captured all of that.
We would, we would be looking at bench, we would be looking at benchmarking by, by family, by job group. It differs definitely when we're talking about classified staff, because there's such a diversity, unlike instructional staff. And so all the points that you're making are exactly correct, and we would, would be looking at how the jobs match up to our benchmark jobs specifically. So the next step on this would be to develop the salary schedule, and then we also then look at salary practices and, and, and develop a scenario surrounding various salary practices. The big difference between classified administrative and faculty is that with faculty, we're able to look at primarily instructional, also counseling, obviously, and some other academic classifications. But classified staff and administrative staff are so diverse that we tend to look at jobs. And so we, we would use these institutions to benchmark those jobs, but we benchmark individual job titles, if you will, to compare them. And your, your, your point that some are more, have more, perhaps more temporary staff than full-time or regular staff is also something that we're looking at, too. So there'll be a different mix come out of the same benchmarking between the different groups.
So just putting a fine point on it, that we, when you looked and determined these were going to be the ideal peer group, you looked at not just faculty, but you looked at the other groups as well when you determined these were the most comparable?
Yes, yes, we will.
Thanks.
So, thank you, Bill, for, for asking your questions, because it was very, it was helpful for me. I guess I still have a, so I still have a bit of a concern relative to the peer group. Are any of those, are any of those colleges, and I cannot think of the term, but they don't require, they're, they're usually well-funded and they're well-funded because they are basic aid. Thank you. I keep on, I want to say basic need, and I know that's not right, but they're basic aid colleges. Now, I don't, I don't know if any of these fall in that category, but, but it would, in my own thinking, it would skew sort of the salaries for some, for some faculty and others, because they're not necessarily, they, I mean, they have some additional funding that others colleges don't. So can, can our, folks, can you tell us if any of these are the basic aid colleges? I, I don't think so, but I'm not sure about, like, Marin or any of the others. It's the question.
Yeah, I don't know if local appropriations fall into that category, but that is something that we've looked at, and I can't tell you who is heavily basic aid funded off the top of my head, but if it may or may not reflect those outliers. For example, you know, South Orange has a high basic aid, and of course, they're one of the top paid faculty salary schedules. And out of the 72 that I looked at, that was surveyed also by the CFT, but.
Okay, well, I don't know that South Orange is a basic aid college. I don't think any of these are. I just want to make certain that they aren't, because I think that would skew it.
So Vice President Haines, if you, if you guys, we go back one slide, you can see that when they knocked out the, like, San Jose and San Mateo.
Yeah, San Mateo is.
Yeah.
They're, they're the basic aid, so we kind of, we kind of addressed that point by identifying outliers and.
Okay.
Knocking them out.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other board questions? I had a couple. I guess, you know, I'm a, I believe in data. I'm not like our current president. But I did think it was weird that in this very data-driven process, we ended up with seven colleges from the Greater Bay Area, all suburban Greater Bay Area, only one from, from a real urban area, which is Compton, and, and two kind of, you know, rural ones. It just, it just struck me as a very odd collection of, of colleges, and it wasn't what I was expecting at all. I thought it would be much more widely dispersed and certainly more from Southern California. I just, I mean, is that typical? I mean, is it just, is it just totally random that, that we ended up with seven suburban Bay Area counties of our 10?
By random, no. And one of the, when we surveyed for the consensus, one of them was geographic location, heavily looking at Ubae area and the Los Angeles area. In terms of the Los Angeles area, we're looking at densely populated areas. They have a very high enrollment, very high operating budget, and so naturally, they fall out as a peer comparison through our process. In terms of Yuba and, you know, Barstow to point them out, we expanded our peer group, meaning we looked at additional institutions that were not heavily, or were not specifically in LA or the Bay Area to well-balanced out geographically, to look nationwide rather than just specifically in the Bay Area and Los Angeles. And we did look at San Diego, again, gross, large district across, so it fell out across all the institutional criteria we measured against.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, when we're setting salaries, it seems a peer group of 10 would be rather complicated to implement. You'd have to look at the salary schedules for all 10. Is that, is that typical? How, how do you guys usually do this?
For community colleges, particularly for faculty jobs, we're, we're looking at salary schedules. So yes, we'll be looking at the actual salary schedules and salary practices of each of these institutions and, and, and developing our recommendations based upon our findings. Did I answer your question or just?
Yeah, it just seems like, I mean, is it not that complex? Maybe, you know, I'm not, again, I'm not a data expert, but is it not that? It seems like what you're looking at to, to, to evaluate a position or salary schedule, 10 is a lot of different salary schedules to work into the mix. I mean, would you take the 10 and average them? And what do you do? How do you, how do you manipulate the 10?
Yeah, well, we'll, actually, each of the salary schedules will have basically what we call a midpoint, which typically lines up with, with their market comparisons. And so that's where we began. We began by looking at how the, how it's structured and. where we began. We began by looking at how the, how it's structured and selecting its pure comparison point, which is usually the midpoint of the salary schedule. Then in addition to that, in the case of faculty in particular, there is a difference in how different institutions pay based upon qualifications, education, experience, backgrounds, and stuff like that. And they'll, they'll have different starting rates and, and different merit points, basically, in it. So we'll be looking at that as well. And when we get into pay practices, we'll come back with, here's what we find as prevailing pay practices for faculty over and above the salary schedule. In other words, how, how are, how do, how do positions, how do people progress through the salary schedule? Where are they hired in the salary schedule? At the, at the low end, at the midpoint, is, how does education and experience apply formula, as a formula for where, where they fall in that open range? And so, yeah, it's a, it's a collection, basically, if not just the salary schedule, but how they formulate new hires and how they progress existing employees through the pay scale. And, and we'll, we'll come up, come back to you with recommendations.
Specifically, we look at their hiring range.
Yes.
Right.
But we have to begin with a salary structure. And so this is, we're really way back at step one, which is, let's, let's get a structure together. And then let's, let's figure out how we, how we position ourselves in the recruiting market for hiring and then salary progression through this, through the ranges.
Just a point of clarification. Typically, when this is done, is it, have you found differential peer groups between faculty and classified hires in the way that you've done this with other colleges?
Yes, sometimes there is a different set of peers for faculty than there might be for classified. Usually, the administrators' peers are pretty close to faculties. It just happens to be that way, based on our experience, but it can be different. And so as we go through this, we'll be definitely looking to see whether or not we need to modify or adjust the peer group for classified as we move into that structure. We'd like to begin here with this peer group and then, and then see if there are variations that we need to make in it. So let me also mention to you that peers change over a period of time. So as the programs and resources of CalBright grows, some of the peers may change in the future. We may pick up different peers or add some different peers in. Or we may decide that we're, that there are certain institutions or organizations that we compete heavily for. And, and so we might want to place an emphasis on that. So this is a beginning point for 2021. In 2025, it may look different.
So this is Pam, again. So should, should there be any consideration that, for the most part, faculty are being hired within a brick and, predominantly within a brick and mortar edithes?
Yes.
And, well, right now, I would say 90-plus percent are now in an online environment, but that was not the case prior to COVID. It was at, at about 20% in terms of online. So will there be, should there be any consideration that, that this is a different modality relative to, to, to the faculty that we hire relative?
We looked at 17 100% online institutions.
Okay, okay.
And, and they fell out of our statistical study, basically.
Greater than 90% online distance learning.
Right, right. We certainly examined those. One of the reasons they fell out is because they tend to be very, very large in terms of enrollment.
Recruitment.
Recruitment, recruitment areas is another matter. But in terms of enrollment and, and also budget, particularly heavily impacted. And then some of them also were four-year institutions.
Correct, yeah.
Rather, rather than the two-year institutions that we were focusing on. In addition to that, you have set as a focus California as your recruiting area. And so that also heavily impacts, impacts. It's like, you're, you're a little more unique in California than you might be on the East Coast, for example. Doesn't mean that those, that the institutions you're talking about, Pam, are not, not important considerations, because they are. We might look at them for pay practices, but we might not necessarily build our pay schedule or structure around that. But we might look to see, are they doing different things to attract and retain instructors that, that a brick and mortar would, would do differently? Okay. And so we'll definitely get into pay practices. We'll go back and revisit those 17 institutions that we've identified nationally for that purpose.
Okay. Any other board members have any comments? Any public comments?
There's no public comment.
Okay, we'll, we'll give it a minute. I thought there might be on this one. Still nothing?
No.
Okay. Then, thank you very much, Mr. and Mr. McKnight.
Thank you.
We'll see you again.
Yes, you will. So now, we, I lost my agenda here, but we just have the public forum left. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do we have anybody who wants to speak in the public forum? Okay, hearing none. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.